Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, April 28, 2015. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:20, and we apologize for the inconvenience of being late, but we had to go over some issues regarding the agenda. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore, Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Koplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams. Here. Moving on to the invocation, Ms. Reed.
I'd like for us to all take a moment of silence to remember those persons in Baltimore and all around the country where we're having a lot of situations where there's outrage and frustration in dealing with local police municipalities, and we want to recognize all of those persons that have lost their lives at the hands of law enforcement this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Allott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to communications, we have none this evening. Moving on to courtesy of the floor. Anyone to my left would like to come to the mic, please do so now. Two minutes, please. We have a large agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, so I am going to give you a time limit this evening. Please be respectful of that time. Anyone to my left can now come to the mic. Anyone in the middle?
Good evening, Honorable Counsel, Ron Chapel, Third Street, Harrisburg. I want to say that I was taken back a few days ago when I heard our mayor attack city council members that the residents voted for, and in particular, City Council President Wanda Williams. I want to say that I've been here throughout your tenure, and you've served honorably as far as I'm concerned. I've only known you to look out for the residents of the city, and I remember that from the Harrisburg Strong Plan, which we spoke against, which Mr. Onkavink ended up resigning his position because of improprieties that he found with that plan. I also heard you speak out against the parking plan, how it would affect innocent residents in this city, and even so much as the Zuma organization that came here a few weeks ago, you offered support for them. You know, I think that what the mayor did by making those statements, I think that he dissed the voters that elected our council members. You know, the mayor needs to know that he was elected mayor, he was not coordinated a king, and he seems to be more interested in helping non-residents that own businesses down here on Second Street than he are the citizens that voted for him. You know, he seems to be more concerned with them making money during happy hour and folks getting drunk than the residents of the city eating. And I think that it's sad when we have a person that is supposed to represent all of us, that wants to tell the residents who to vote for and who not to vote for. You know, I want to say, President Wanda Williams, that I respect you, and you have served honorably, and if I had anything to say about it, you will continually be the city council president.
Thank you.
One last point, I want to ask people to be sure to vote.
Can't do that. Can't do that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you can't do that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'm not naming anyone.
No, no, you still can't do that in anything dealing with the election, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the middle?
You're bound to cut me off.
You can give it to her, pass it down.
Hello, my name is George Miller, and I address you with my concerns regarding the current plans to change the flow of traffic on two of the city's busiest streets, Front and Second. I question whether sufficient information with regards to the proposed changes have been gathered, analyzed impartially, and whether adequate public input has been enlisted in the process. I'm suspicious that a handful of individuals is promoting this endeavor without its totally comprehensive study that such a major undertaking necessitates. For those who have, I'm going to skip something, you can go down. My fervent opinion is that no changes should be made to the direction of flow nor the number of lanes of either streets. Rather, what we need to do is to reduce the speed and reckless nature of many drivers on these streets, along with the same problem existing on Sixth, Seventh, Cameron Division and Paxton Street, as well as the Market and Harvey Taylor Bridge. Far too often, neither Front nor Second Street are in fact three lanes, maintenance trucks, work equipment, delivery trucks, cabs, police, emergency equipment movement, open hole repairs, potholes, et cetera, block one or more lanes, three lanes reduced to two lanes and at times to only one lane. Three primary areas of my major concerns, first of all, is the emergency equipment movement. Front and Second Streets are the primary roads used on the west side of the city for emergency equipment movement. Fire, ambulance, and police vehicles predominantly use these two routes to facilitate their needs. Multiple lanes moving in one direction with the maneuverability required to complete their tasks in the most efficient and safest manner. With the volume of traffic on these streets, three lanes, not two lanes, and most certainly not one lane, are required if we truly respect the endeavors of these emergency vehicles and the safety of those of us who live along the streets. Movement of thousands, being the type of city that we are, we have the responsibility to enable the thousands of people traveling into and out of and about our city as safely and efficiently as reasonably possible.
Sir, your two minutes are up, sir, and we will take time to read this.
My three minutes are up.
Two.
Can I, could I just go back to what I suggested, counsel here, by any chance, or, you know, I've just called, "It's time for city council to repave and reline these streets as they are with no changes. It's time for city council to address the speeding and reckless driving on all the city streets."
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And is there anyone here, I see, there's one candidate, no, it's two candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the middle? Anyone to my right?
Stan Lawson, present, Greater Harrisburg, NWA CP. I too want to thank Wanda Williams and city council. We met with them the other night in a workshop, and the ones we met were very, very concerned and very committed, and we think it's a breath of fresh air to have banned the box being introduced tonight. We encourage all of you to join in. We had a lot of questions. I will agree with Councilwoman Reed that it's not an answer to everything, but it's a new beginning. It's, you know, every journey starts with a first step, and I think it's a step in the right direction to make us all equal. We talk about the pledge of allegiance to the flag, and this is a breath of fresh air. Someone doing something 30 years ago and then paying for it today is wrong, and this will make it right. And I think it's a very good legislation. I appreciate all council members and your dedication and sincerity about this, and we're, and NWA CP, deeply grateful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight.
Could you cite your, could you address your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Rhonda Mays, resident of Harrisburg.
Your address, please.
Seventeen twenty eight Hur.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight on behalf of the residents on Seventeenth Street that are experiencing now the difficulty with their sewage lines. I would just urge the council to work with the mayor to try to put together a package that would be suitable to help residents, especially our elderly homeowners, who through no fault of their own find themselves in a situation that is very costly and extreme, just downright unexpected. It's a burden to the families, they're still having problems in their home, and now it's not just the issue of the sewage, but it's causing other damages also. So the longer we go along with this, the more damage we find to these homes that are related, but not, you know, directly caused by the water, by the sewage line breakage, but are collateral damage due to the sewer line breakage. So we can get all parties that are supposed to be working on this solution together to come to a resolution as soon as possible, financial and the technical aspects of it. The families would be appreciative, and so would all the residents of the neighborhood, because right now, we have a situation where we have sewage going outside of the line into a place where it shouldn't be going, and it definitely is a health and safety hazard for all of us in the neighborhood. Thank you.
You're welcome. City council is already working on legislation for that purpose. We held a meeting last week, and we will have a follow-up meeting. Mr. Baltimore is not here tonight. No, he's not here.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm an advocate for the homeless and the poor, and also, I'm a citizen and a resident of the city of Harrisburg. Violation of someone's constitutional rights to speak, because you may not like what an individual says, but you will gag them. Violation of people speaking the truth. I have remind this council, and I will forever remind the residents of this city, the bias, the prejudicial things that happen in this city. I will ask this council once again, there are homeless people sleeping in the streets, but they say they're there because they want to. I no longer care about someone lives in Chicago, Miami, Colorado, Maine. I'm talking about the residents of our great city where this council and the mayor's office refuse to help their own. So I say one thing, we talk about budgets being passed, we talk about having money to do extra things, we talk about $100,000 plan to do playgrounds. When will the opportunity come in this great city? The youth, that's good, but then again, it is not only the youth of this city that needs help, it is the ones that are less and less getting nothing. And once again, I'd like to say, you know, I love my city, but I think we're in a division and a divide here. Some people in this council, they must have, they must understand what the United States Constitution is for. Have a good evening.
Anyone else to my right, please?
Good evening. My name is Robert Candidate, phone number 877-9943. I'm chairman of the face base committee for Dauphin County. I love everybody, I just wish everybody else did. But I'm not here, and I want to state, I am not here for Dauphin County. I want to state it again, I'm not here representing Dauphin County. But I do want to talk a little about the enrichment program for the city of Harrisburg. Last year, I had the opportunity, and you do have information on this, I won't talk a whole lot. Last year, I had the opportunity to oversee the AEE site down there on Mark Street and work with Parkland Recreation. So from some of the things learned, I thought there was something we could work with this year to not only do the after-school program for the eight weeks, but to continue it in the communities after the eight weeks. And one of the things is, now, one of your officers went to school with me, I'm going to mention her name, and she got officer of the year for some of the programs she ran. We went to this school, she was my next, she was the city next chair to me. So I can take this training and help train 24 peoples to facilitate the program. The other thing is, I know we tried to get the SRO officer into school, I think with some of the initiatives that we have in the program that we're going to run, we could take some of the officer back into the schools, you know, and, because I do think that the relationship, oh, another thing I want to say, I want to praise the Harrisburg Police Department, because we don't help Baltimore or anything, but it's only because they have a relationship with the school. And I think it's important to have a continual relationship with the school, and if we take the initiative in the program and continue to do mentoring in the community, I think we can have a program of 24/7/365, because that's what we need. Four, eight weeks out of the year, do not do it for our kids. We have thousands of kids in the program, nobody hear about them, which is wonderful. But then, once we lose that connection, then we start having all kinds of problems. We have to develop a plan, and I'm asking, this is, this is going to take the entire community to come together so we can have a relationship with the parents in school, the kids in school, and the parents and kids in the community, because that is where the issues are. We cannot continue to depend on the schools to do what we can do in our community, but we must join together to do that.
Thank you.
So that's all I want to say, and now you have the information on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Frank Turner. I live in Linglestown, but my 95-year-old mother lives on Seventeenth Street at 1105, North Seventeenth Street. She has a major problem with the sewer line. I think there was an article in the paper about it. I saw, President, Mr. President, something about your mother had the same problems. And I didn't know there was a party line that three or four houses run together. And there's a dilemma, when one or two or three persons don't want to pay, they take advantage of the one who is willing or ablest to repair it. Number one, I want to know if my grandmother, my mother would decide to just do her line, is there some kind of code that says you can't do that? And she is using, she has put down a certain amount of money to pay for them to dig the hole up. Now she's stuck with how to get the repair done and the hole refilled when she has no money. Her dilemma now is that she has to make a loan, a substantial loan, because the estimate is, excuse me, $15,000 to $20,000 to get this problem resolved. She has a problem, and I understand the goodness of the mayor and some of the city council people, Brother Baltimore, who I know well, is trying, the young lady with us tonight is trying to do all they can to support the senior citizens. How many more senior citizens will have this problem as the city goes along digging the UGI lines and touch one of the frail lines, sewer lines, and then they're stuck? I want to know if there's anything you can do, $2,000 is not, nowhere near, $19,000.
Okay.
B, C, what you can do to support the seniors in the city when you're digging, contractors are digging, and they are not being careful of what they're doing and cause extensive damage that comes back, comes back to the homeowner.
Okay, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Petrowski, please note that Mr. Baltimore is here. And sir, if you have a few minutes, could you wait after the meeting to speak with someone?
Ma'am.
Could, after the meeting, could you wait a couple minutes to speak with someone?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my right? If not, Mr. Grover would like to take a couple minutes, council members, to speak with us regarding an issue.
It was brought to our attention today that there was a technical defect in the printed notice for tonight's public meeting. It had the date of the 14th, they basically reran the same date. We have reviewed the law on that. The notice on the website was correct, the notice on the doors was correct, and the law does allow you to cure defects in technical violations. You're doing your meeting at a regularly scheduled time, at a regular location, and obviously, there's public here who understood it was happening. But the next time you meet, we're going to have to have a vote, a separate vote, just to ratify whatever you vote on tonight, not on each item, but just a separate vote for ratification. The courts have found that as sufficient to correct any technical defect. So I'm just letting you know that, because technically, the statute does say you have to publish in a newspaper the date and time, so.
Any questions, council members?
Yes, is an approval of the minutes the equivalent of a ratification of the meeting?
I think there's not enough case law to tell you. I mean, my thought was yes, but the court that accepted a cure, accepted an actual ratification vote as a cure, and it's easy enough to do, so.
Okay. Do we need to have, call a separate meeting, or?
No, just at your next regularly advertised meeting, when you vote.
Okay, okay.
Just have a motion.
To ratify the entire.
To ratify the actions.
Ratify, okay.
And you would do it at the same time you were approving the minutes, you would make the motion at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, council members?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grover.
You're welcome, Madam President.
Moving on to approval of minutes, approval of the legislative session minutes of April 14, 2015. Are there any admissions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, have a motion to approve. You have a second, please. Minutes will stand as approved. Report to committees. Report from Chair Daniels on the Building and Housing Committee meeting of April 16, 2015. Ms. Daniels, are you ready to report?
Yes, Council President. So the Building and Housing Committee met on April 16. Present were council members Wilson and council member Allott. We discussed four different resolutions, and present were Jeffrey Knight and Aaron Johnson to answer our questions, and I'll try to be brief. The simplest, we discussed four resolutions, the most straightforward one was Resolution 23-2015, which is basically an amendment to the city zoning code to clarify that we, when we use the word residence in relationship to treatment centers, that we actually meant patients, so the code will be amended. So I would recommend that we vote to approve that resolution. The second easiest resolution to mention is Resolution 22-2015, which is also zoning a code amendment that would change the designation of two parcels in the Bellevue area from residential load density zoning to open space recreation. We, basically, we're just making sure that those parcels continue to be used the way they currently are. We are, however, postponing the vote on that resolution, just because if we delay the vote, we may obtain a more favorable benefit from delaying that vote. So while I would recommend that we vote in the affirmative for it, when it does come up, we are postponing that vote. The other resolution we addressed was Resolution 24-2015, which is another change to the zoning code, requiring convenience stores to have trash and recycling receptacles in front of convenience stores with and without gas dispensing for use by patrons. And basically, this is not going to alter the number of times that the city will be collecting garbage from these convenience stores, we're just simply requiring a smaller receptacle so that, in the exterior of these buildings, so that when patrons leave, they have a location to dispose of debris, as well as recycle debris. And, but there should, this is not, doesn't impact the actual cost per tonnage, it doesn't, it doesn't impact much cost to these, to these facilities. So the recommendation on that resolution, which is coming up for a vote today, is that we support that resolution. And then, the final resolution we addressed was 21-2015, which is rather complicated. Basically, we are trying to change the zoning code to require folks who are seeking special exemptions and variances to notify their neighbors about the changes in use, requested changes in uses of property. The current, currently, we've been relying on the municipal planning code, which doesn't require much notice beyond a posting on the door of the property that's in question. And we had some back and forth about the costs related to various levels of notifications, right? Do we, do we notify just properties that are adjacent and budding? Do we notify, do we require notification of properties within 100 feet, 200 feet, 300 feet? During our committee meeting, we addressed and identified the cost of the different layers, and what we've decided to recommend is that we send the resolution, the change in the map back up to the county so that they can change the notification requirements to properties within 100 feet of the property that's seeking the change in use. Because we can't vote on this amendment until the county makes a decision, we can't just make the amendment as a council, as a body here. We have to go through the whole notification process, again, from the beginning. Go ahead.
You may want to make just simply a motion to do that tonight, to formalize that request.
Okay.
That you would amend it, so then there's something to go back to Dauphin County.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to amend.
You're making a motion for Resolution 24, which the committee reviewed.
Twenty-one.
To send it back to Dauphin County to consider whichever, is it the 100-foot parameter?
Yeah.
That you are, that you have discussed. That would be the motion you would make.
Okay.
And then, that would authorize it going back to Dauphin County. There's a re-advertising requirement the city would have.
Right.
But at that point, you know, that would provide what is needed for that to happen.
Okay, so, well, since not in the, so 21 isn't a part of the resolution, so where do I make that?
I think we just make a motion to suspend the rules, and then.
When, when.
At any point in the resolution process.
And when the point of the resolution.
Okay, okay.
Then you.
Okay, I could, I could go ahead and do that. And then, once the county goes through their process, the new map will come down to us, and then we can vote. And we did have the planning bureau do a lot of calculations related to costs, and we did try to balance the interest of the property owner who's seeking the application, who's seeking the exemption, while with the interest of the adjacent properties, the neighboring properties. So we think we came up with a good compromise. And that's really it for my report. Thank you.
Okay. What resolution is that again? I'm removing 22.
I'm sorry?
I removed 22 from the agenda.
Yes.
What resolution is that?
Read 21.
Okay.
Which wasn't on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Moving on to report from Chair Allott on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting of Monday, April 20, 2015. Mr. Allott, are you ready to report?
I sure am. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
We had a joint committee meeting of budget and finance and public safety on Monday, April 20. Present were Council President Williams, council member Baltimore, council member Reed, and myself, and council member Wilson. Up for discussion on the budget and finance portion of the evening was Resolution 39, which was a budget reallocation. That budget reallocation took on several components, and just to highlight what those components are for those in attendance tonight, one component was to adjust the budget to allocate for the purchasing more salt than had, than what had been initially expected due to the severe weather from this past winter. Then also encumber some salt budget for, I don't even want to say it, but next winter starting, because I don't even want to think about that at this point. We also had a reallocation for some outside legal council fees. In addition, we had a reallocation to deal with some street paving projects to get some things underway while we wait for the PennDOT money, match money to come on board. We also had an allocation to propose, say, deputy business administrator position for operations. And lastly, we had a allocation to develop a grant for homeowners dealing with some of the issues that they're, dealing with the lateral line issue. I am going to make a motion, and we get to that portion, to actually pull out the allocation developing the deputy business administrator as a separate amendment, and I'm going to table that and put that back into committee. All other portions of the allocation, I'm going to recommend voting in the affirmation for. for. And just a note in terms of the importance of the issue that we're dealing with, with the lateral lines, I realize that this is just one step that we can take. I encourage, along with the mayor, and I know my member colleagues on council, to encourage outside entities, including Capital Region Water and other entities, to also follow suit and develop a program to assist the homeowners in the city with this issue. This issue is not going away, it's going to get worse as we continually deal with an aging infrastructure. And so I do challenge both my colleagues on council and with the administration to continually seek out some alternatives and some additional measures that we can do to help ease the burden that this is going to take. And to the common terms of costs, I have to say this, I feel like you guys are getting gouged in your costs. I want to make sure that you get a fair and equitable cost to be able to repair that lateral line.
Yeah.
So I just want to go on record in saying that cost seems so obscenely high.
It is.
And I think that that concerns me greatly.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure you get a fair and equitable cost to that. And I know that might not be part of the, but I, just it affects me, I feel that that just stinks. So at any rate, I do encourage passage of this budget reallocation with the components minus the motion I'll make to take that out.
Thank you, Mr. Grover.
Thank you.
Moving on to report from Chair Baltimore on the Public Safety Committee meeting of Monday, April 20th, 2015.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
As Mr. Allott alluded to, the same folks that were at his meeting were at, were at my meeting. And just to jump on what he said, I think that estimate was way too high. I think it came in at $20,000, and I think there was another estimate came in around $3,000. So there's, I would like some of our city certified plumbers to go out and take a look at that if possible, and get some real numbers, if that's possible. But that's it. We met on a professional services emergency notification system. Chief Enterline presented a program, a system, that notifies city residents electronically, either through their phones, or I think that the, yeah, the house phone was the notification system. And it was a system used for emergency and non-emergency incidents, such as an evacuation or a boil water alert. And I wish I'd wrote down a little more, but the payment of that, I believe, was, give me one second. Oh, I think it was like an $8,000 system, or something like 13, or eight to $13,000, that next year will be at $1,000. It was something like that. It was, whatever it was, it was, it was, it was very, an economical, economically feasible And it was a software system, I think, that we will manage and learn how to manage. But that's pretty much, I do advocate passage of it. It's a, it's a, it's a good system. And I apologize to everyone for being late. We're in the middle of a doubleheader that we were losing both games, so I apologize for that.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Moving on to report from Chair Williams, that's myself, on the Administration Committee meeting of Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015. The Administration Committee held a joint meeting with the Public Works Committee Chair on April 22nd, 2015. Administration Committee had six resolutions and one bill to consider and discuss. Resolution 97, it was a resolution appointing Patricia Buckley to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council here and after EAC. Ms. Buckley had an extensive career working for the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and also with the Environmental Resources, which totaled 33 and a half years of Commonwealth service. She possesses the necessary skills and qualifications needed to assist the city of Harrisburg on this committee. We are very fortunate that Ms. Buckley is willing to volunteer her time, and who brings a wealth of working knowledge on environmental issues, and wants to serve on this EAC committee for the city of Harrisburg. I ask that council vote in affirmative for Ms. Buckley, who would be a great asset to the city of Harrisburg. Moving on to Bill 17, it's an ordinance amending Chapter 2-503 of codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg known as Youth Commission, by lowering the age required for a resident to participate as a commission member, and updating the list of schools that may be represented by commission members. Representing the administration that evening, to introduce the bill, was Carl Singleton. The purpose of this Youth Commission is to advise and offer recommendations to the city government on all matters pertaining to youth in the city of Harrisburg. This bill would lower the age requirements to be between the ages of 11 to 18 inclusive, and those members who reach the age of 19 during their term will be able to complete the term to its conclusion. The second part of this bill is to update the list of schools that can be represented by members. Harrisburg High and SciTech High will have four student representations. Harrisburg Charter and Private Schools will have three. Harrisburg Career Academies will have four representatives, I'm sorry. This bill is certainly a positive action by the administration for the youth of our city, and I ask for full council vote of approval. Moving on to Resolution 115, it's a resolution supporting ban the box legislation aimed at removing questions regarding criminal history from employment applications. This is the second committee meeting held regarding this resolution. The committee was joined again to speak on this resolution by Mr. Brandon Flood, who is the Executive Director of the PA Legislative Black Caucus, along with the city's Human Resource Director and Affirmative Action Officer. Man the Box is to remove all questions regarding criminal history from job applications for city or municipal jobs. This change allows for easing of, for easing of hiring barriers, and creates a fair chance to compete for jobs. More than 70 municipalities in 13 states have adopted the law. Harrisburg, being the capital of the state, would set an example, as Lancaster, Philadelphia, and Pittsburgh have already done on a local level. I certainly ask for full affirmative approval by this council for this legislation. Moving on to Resolution 134, it's a resolution appointing Darryl S. Waters to serve on the Capital Region Water Authority Board. Mr. Darryl Waters is a lifelong resident of Harrisburg. Presently, Mr. Waters is a Senior Director of Programs for the Boys and Girls Club of Lancaster. In that position, he possesses a high level of work ethics. His skills include planning, strong management, and supervision, as well as computer software. He is committed to achieving his goals. Mr. Waters would bring youth, as well as a high level energy, and his willingness to be a team player to this, to this board, which is an asset for this city. I ask for affirmative vote as well for Mr. Darryl Waters to serve on the Capital Regional Water Board. Resolution 19, a resolution approving the sale of city surplus vehicles from the Bureau of Vehicle Management. It is the Bureau of Vehicle Management's desire to sell these vehicles, which would provide space, as well as revenue, to the city of Harrisburg. Presently, the city has 76 vehicles with high mileage, parts needed to replace, that are no longer available, and others that are unrepairable. The sales shall be made to the best responsible bidder and advertised in at least one newspaper. The value of the sale of the vehicles is expected to exceed $1,000. The selling of these vehicles will allow for more usage of city storage facilities, as well as bringing revenue into the city of Harrisburg. I also ask for affirmative vote by this council for the sale of these vehicles. Moving on to Resolution 27, it's a resolution approving the sale, donation, and surrender of certain unused personal property of the city. The city of Harrisburg possesses items of a bulk nature, still stored at the facility that is now owned by Capital Regional Water. Capital Regional Water is requesting that the city remove the items so that they can utilize the facility. The items that are there are a variety of bulky artifacts, pieces of the collapsed Walnut Street Bridge, and pieces of a sunken, pre-revolutionary wooden naval vessel and related artifacts. The artifacts, which the city estimates that the value is only $500 or less, due to the fact that there was a lack of interest displayed in previous auctions regarding other artifacts. The administration will post the items on bulletin boards in the city government center, as well as advertising, and will attempt to put them online. The items for donation or display are the Walnut Street Bridge pieces, which will be given to the Smithsonian Museum of Industrial History in Bethlehem, PA. The naval vessel remnants of the Royal Savage, which the United States Naval officials have identified as items that were improperly bought and sold, are subject to the ownership of the federal government. The city will be seeking reimbursement for the costs associated with acquiring and maintaining the Royal Savage in the course of surrendering these items. I ask for full vote affirmative on this sale of these items. Resolution 31, it's a resolution approving the lease agreement and memorandum of lease agreement, the forms of which are attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Can't even read my own writing. Oh, I'm sorry. Between Harrisburg Parking Authority as lesser and Cell Co. partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless as less E, which is Verizon, for installation, operation, maintenance of communications, antennas, and related equipment on the City Island parking garage, and authorizing, directing, execution, and delivery of the lease by the city of Harrisburg as owner of the land upon which the City Island parking garage is construed. The Harrisburg Parking Authority has authorized Verizon to install a cell antenna on garage located on City Island. With the 2013 Harrisburg Downtown Parking Cooperation Agreement that was reached on December 31st, 2013, among the city, the Parking Authority, and others, the Parking Authority has been given the right to maintain, repair, and provide for the operation of the City Island parking garage on land owned by the city. And since the city still owns the land under the garage, we have to sign off and authorize this lease agreement and memorandum of lease agreement. The term is for five years, and automatically extends for four terms of five years, unless Verizon gets notice to terminate three months before, before the end of the term. Rent is $15,600 annually, to be paid in equal monthly installments. Verizon will pay $1,440 per year for electrical service. Because the city of Harrisburg is the landowner, we are required to sign the lease, and therefore I ask for full cooperation and affirmative vote on this lease agreement. That is the end of my committee report. Moving on to report from Chair Reed on the Public Works Committee meeting of Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015. Mr. Reed, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am, Madam President. Boy, we were going to be here all night. Public Works had a committee meeting held April 22nd, 2015. As the president said, it was a joint committee meeting with the Administration Committee. On the agenda was two resolutions and one bill with a frank discussion about the rollout of the recycling and trash can distribution to residents and businesses alike. On the agenda, we had Resolution 36, which is a resolution ratifying the submission of Pennsylvania's Clean Diesel Grant Project, project application for the Department of Environmental Protection to facilitate the project to decrease emissions from fuel-powered diesel waste trucks to compressed natural gas. Basically, what they want to do is they want to apply for a grant. If approved, the grant, if the grant is approved, the city will acquire six CNG, which is compressed natural gas vehicles, over a five-year period, and with two this year and one over the next four years. This will assist with the phasing out of older sanitation trucks in the fleet, and provide a cleaner, more efficient vehicle for sanitation. If approved, there will be a follow-up training for motor vehicle operators and the staff at Public Works in operation and maintenance of these vehicles. I'm asking my colleagues to support this application for the grant and vote affirmative for it. Resolution 38, it was a resolution ratifying the custom price agreement with Guttman Energy for the generation of electricity for certain properties and accounts. This resolution will allow the city to lock in 70% of our energy costs for the next 30 months, and this will include costs associated with the streetlights, traffic signals, and this is a very low rate, which will bring a significant savings to the city in their electric costs for operating these services. I'm again asking my colleagues to support this resolution. Bill 1, an ordinance providing additional authorization to diminished blight and Section 9303.99 of codified ordinances regarding penalties related to municipal waste and collection, and supplementing Chapter 11 of the codified ordinances to authorize enforcement of blight and waste provisions. Finally, this is the first of the missing pieces in Operation Code. Although we have seen several improvements in the illegal dumping and inappropriate trash collection and disposal ordinances by our residents, the ordinance, this ordinance gives a wider wand of enforcement of both the Public Works Department and codes. If this bill is approved, it will increase the minimum fines for the violation of the basic collection ordinances, and has step and penalties included for repeat offenders. The ordinances themselves have not changed, but the penalties for not adhering to them have. As we saw on the story that ran last week on the news, there are still many parts in the city overrun with trash and blight, and the passing of this bill will be a step in the right direction to finally resolve the issue, this issue. All city ordinances can be found on the link to City Council's website. I will encourage all residents to please go to the city website to read the sanitation and collection ordinances to ensure that you are not in violation. For those that do not have access to a computer, you may contact the city clerk for a copy of this ordinance, of the ordinances that you may have questions about. We also had an update from our Public Works Coordinator, and we had an update from the Public Works Director regarding the rollout of new collection sanitation trash cans. Public Works is currently actively processing business accounts to ensure that they're paying the correct rate, and that they are, have Harrisburg as its primary trash hauler. There's been a problem in the past where Harrisburg has not been the primary trash hauler, and the city ordinance regulates that all businesses have Harrisburg as their primary hauler unless it is approved by the Public Works Director. They will begin in June issuing new 96-gallon toters for business customers, along with new recycling toters. The goal of the new toters is to reduce the amount of trash and to encourage recycling from businesses and residents alike. They are currently working on a new structure for business, business and business, business customers, and new rates for business customers. Basically, what this is saying is that if you have a business that you're getting a dumpster that's picked up two, three, four times a week, you're not recycling. So the whole point is, is that we want you to start recycling, and the recycling coordinator did a press conference last week to roll out the new recycling initiative, and trying to get people to understand that recycling is not, is not an option, it actually is an ordinance, it is a law that was passed back in the early 90s, and that we should be recycling, and this ordinance, the penalties and the fees and the fee structure for businesses is going to be beneficial to those businesses that recycle. Those that refuse to recycle are going to be paying, maybe, may see an increase in their rate, not based on the fact that we're increasing the rates, it's based on how many times we're picking up, and how much we're actually picking up. So you'll see a lot more information about this going forward, and Public Works is doing a phenomenal job, we're going out, basically letting the businesses know, door-to-door, letting them know exactly what their expectations are when it comes to recycling, and what their expectations are as far as what it is for trash. Again, Public Works did do a, they have a PSA on Channel 20, which I haven't had the opportunity to see, on recycling. Recycling in the city of Harrisburg is taking a forward step. Exciting, I've been talking about recycling for three years now, and it's really exciting to see that we're going to be moving forward, we're going to be issuing 32-gallon recycling containers, which is about the same as you'll see in the suburban areas, ours are blue, not yellow, but those, you'll see the new recycling containers that come out. Some of the things that you can recycle, and there's a major change in which you cannot recycle, so I'm going to take the time to read the flyer. This flyer is actually available at the, at the front desk, it's also available on the city website. If you don't know, if you can't, you don't have access to the city website, or can't come down to. or can't come down to the city government center to pick one up, please make a phone call to the city clerk's office or the administration, and they will make sure that you get a copy of the recycling flyer. It basically says, "The paper is the new gold. Newspaper, magazines, phone books, office paper, junk mail, paperback books, paper bags, cartons of milk, wine, soup, egg cartons. All of those things can now be placed in your recycling bin, along with your cereal boxes." If you have loose paper, shredded paper, please put it in a plastic bag before you put it in your recycling bag. Then, of course, that just makes sense, so it doesn't go flying all over the area, and then you get charged with littering. If you need paper to shred, there's a link on here. You can send it to Keystone, Goodwill Keystone area, or Tri-State Shredding. They will come out and shred your paper. They'd be happy to have it, because paper and recycling is the new gold. Corrugated boxes. Avoid food-stained boxes or wax boxes. Flatten all the boxes. Get rid of the packaging and material inside of them, unless they're made of paper. So, like, when you get your cereal boxes, take the plastic insert out of your cereal box, put that into your trash, and fold your box up and put it into the recycling container. If your quantity of cardboard is small, please stack it neatly and tie it together, band it together, so that they, the recycling people can pick it up when they pick up your trash at the same time. Plastic, water bottles, juice boxes, soda, milk cans, ketchup, mustard, shampoo, anything that's plastic can go into your recycling bin. Yogurt, cottage cheese, margin, your, your margin tubs. Please rinse them out, just basically for pests, so that you're not getting a lot of pest and things through there. Look through the numbers on the bottom of your cups. A lot of times, you'll see a number on the bottom of this, 1 through 7. If it says 1 through 7, you can recycle it. So, those red solo cups that they had a big song about, yes, you can recycle those up. Tin steel and, tin and steel containers, please, again, rinse them out, and that's your, your, your cans, your peas and your carrots and all of those cans. They can go into your recycling bin. Empty paint cans. If your paint can is empty, you may, you may put that into your recycling bin, as long as it is clean and dry. And if it's, if you can, fill it with kitty litter to make sure that you get all of the residue out of it. Other items that must be recyclable, but you cannot put in your recycling bin. And please stop putting these out with the trash, because they are not trash. Trashmen will not take them, and they're a giant nuisance in the city. Televisions. If you have an old television, and take it out to the recycling center out at Dauphin County Recycling Center, 1901 South Cameron Street. They are not part of the trash, the city. This federal government changed the ordinance two years ago. You no longer can put your televisions out. People still put televisions out every day. If our, under the sanitation and collection ordinances that we had in Bill 1, if you put them out, you may be subject to a fine or penalty. Computers, small appliances, fluorescent lamps, auto trucks' tires. Tires are not recyc, these are items that are not recyclable. They're not to go with you, they're not to go into your trash, but they are recyclable. If you have any questions as to how to dispose of these items, please contact Public Works, or you can contact the city clerk's office, and he will get you in contact with whomever you need to. The biggest change in our recycling is glass. Glass is no longer accepted in the recycling bins. Primary reason is that when you put the glass in a recycling bin, what happens is because they're going with single-stream recycling, so all of the items that are addressed prior to this go into a big machine, and the big machine separates everything based on what it is. But when the glass gets intermingled with that, it tears up the machine, and then it gets commingled, and then it creates a lot of problems. So, for all of the residents, when you're getting your, your glass, most of it's like spaghetti cans, spaghetti jars, you know, the items that you have of glass, if you have a wine bottle, those items, we're asking you to put them in your regular trash. If you are like me, that is going to recycle that anyway, put it into a separate container, and then you may take that yourself to the recycling center, or there's a bin up at North Harrisburg on, at the 7th Street Shopping Center. So, if you insist on recycling it, you will have to recycle it yourself as if you recycle your, your tires, your television, and everything, that will be totally on you. Or it is okay for you to put it directly into the trash bin, and it will go out to the incinerator to be burned. Trash, please put, make sure that, that we're defining. This brochure defines exactly what trash is. Glass of all kinds. Glass windows, glass beers, glass beers, oh, I'm thinking. Glass windows, mirrors, ceramics, food, anything that's food, food soil, shipping, padded envelopes, like you get the envelopes in the mail, plastics, papers, like I said, in the cereal bin. Plastic grocery bags. The plastic grocery bags can go into your trash. Now, all of the grocery stores, you can go to them, and you can take your plastic grocery bags right back, and they will recycle them for you. So, when you go into most of your grocery stores, you can actually take them back. Wet cardboard, waxy cardboard, used paper towels, tissues. Aluminum foil, a lot of people think that aluminum foil should go in your recycling bin. No, that should go into your trash. Plastic tableware, like your knives and stuff, it's cookout season. All of that can go into the trash, but please recycle your aluminum cans and things like that. Hazless material, there's, of course, chemicals, paint thinners, bug spray, things like that cannot be recycled. They should not be placed in your trash. If you have any questions and concerns as to what should or should not go into your trash, please contact Public Works or the city clerk's office, or get a contact, get one of these flyers, and all of this information is laid out for you. Thank you very much, Madam President. That's the end of my report.
You're welcome, Ms. Reed. Moving on, a report from Chair Wilson on the Parks Recreation and Enrichment Committee meeting of Monday, April 27, 2015. Ms. Wilson, are you ready with your report?
Yeah, this is going to be real short, so we can move on with the agenda. Okay, Resolution 37, 2015, was a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to Highmark Blue Shield for $100,000 to use towards Park and Recreation Enrichment Summer and After School Program. From the administration was Ms. Parker, Ms. Jackie Parker, Mr. Kevin Sanders, and Neil Grover. From council was Shemane Daniels and myself. And of course, I think the news media may have gotten it wrong. It said that we were here to discuss applying for the grant, well, the grant has actually been awarded, and so we will be receiving the grant. Last night's meeting was to discuss what the money was going to be used for, and so it's going to be directed, 90, matter of fact, $91,500 will be directed specifically towards our summer program and after-school program dealing with our children over the summer and all through the school year for next year. And then another $8,400 will be directed towards activities that deal with what they call a healthy lifestyle, deals with things like zumba instruction, aquazumba, yoga, and jazzercise. And so, that is the end of my report. Thank you very much, and I'm going to ask for a full support.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, the ordinance for first reading, Bill 5 of 2015. Mr. Patrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 5 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Koplinsky. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg to technically amend and update Section 5-703.2 of the Codified Ordinances of the City relating to the imposition allocation of parking tax to conform with legislative acts adopted in 2013 by the City Council for the implementations of the Harrisburg Strong Plan.
And we replace an administration committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, Bill 17, 2014.
Bill 17 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 2-503 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg known as Youth Commission by lowering the age required for a resident to participate as a commission member and updating the list of schools that may be represented by commission members.
An amendment, City Council members, is just on line 44, removes "hi", which, which was taken out of the legislation. Any other questions or comments? Let me vote on the amendment, please.
Calling the vote. Calling the vote for the amendment, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Calling on the vote as amended, please.
Calling the, the vote for Bill 17, 2014 as amended. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 17 as amended passes.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
On Bill 1, there was a technical amendment, just typographical errors. I'm not sure that's appearing under Bills for Amendment, just, just to note that.
Yeah, I have that down. You told me before, prior to that.
Okay.
Okay, and I think Ms. Reed was going to do the amendment. Bill 1 of 2015, ordinance for final passage. Mr. Patrowski, please read that into record.
Bill 1 of 2015 is moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's an ordinance providing for additional authority to diminish blight, amending Section 9-303.99 of the Codified Ordinances Regarding Penalties Related to Municipal Waste Collection and Supplementing Chapter 11 of the Codified Ordinances to Authorize Improved Enforcement of Blight and Waste Provisions.
Ms. Reed, do you want to speak about it?
No, I'm good. There's, just, just a tech, like the solicitor said, there's one technical amendment, and it just basically is some punctuations that were completed in the ordinance that were added. So, I'm going to ask for the bill to be approved as amended, as amended. I would tell you exactly what they are, but I can't remember where they were.
Neil? There's a dollar sign that was missing in front of the number 100, so it just said 100. I didn't say what it was, and the others related to continuity errors on commas and things like that.
Bill 1, 2015, as amended. Any questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Are we calling the vote for the amendment first?
The amendment, yes, I said it's amended.
Calling the vote for the amendment is, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment carries.
Bill 1 as amended.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill 1 as amended passes.
Okay, Resolution 97. What did I, oh, Mr., what do we amend on that?
Changing it from the mayor to council appointment.
Oh, you're going to change it from the mayor appointment to the council appointment?
The language of pointing, and it's, and it's a council.
Okay. On Resolution 97, we're just changing it from the mayor appointment to the council appointment. Any question or comments on that amendment, on Resolution 97? Hearing none, please call the vote on Resolution 97.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 97 passes.
As amended, please call the vote. Oh, you called it as amended?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution 115.
Resolution 115 of 2014 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution supporting ban-the-box legislation aimed at removing questions regarding criminal history from employment applications.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 115? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 115 passes.
Thank you, council members, for your support on Resolution 115. Moving on to Resolution 134.
Resolution 134, 2014, was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution appointing Darryl S. Walters to serve on the Capital Region Water Authority Board.
And just a good information on this, the expiration date will be January 4, 2020, for Mr. Walters. So, any other questions or comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 134 passes.
Okay, for the public's reference, what I just mentioned about Resolution 134 for appointing Darryl S. Walters to serve on the Capital Region Water Board, Authority Board, I was, I meant to say that his expiration of his term will be January 4, 2020. Moving on to Resolution 19 of 2015.
Resolution 19 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving the sale of city surplus vehicles from the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
So, any questions or comments on Resolution 19? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 19 passes.
Thank you. Resolution 22 of 2015 will be removed from the agenda. Resolution 23, 2015, please read that into record.
Resolution 23 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the zoning code amendment request submitted by the City of Harrisburg to change Section 7-309.2RR1 of the zoning code, which establishes specific criteria for operation of a treatment center to be permitted by right in certain zoning districts to replace the word "residence" with the word "patients" to make the text consistent with definition of treatment centers in Section 7-333.2260 of the zoning code, which defines treatment centers as a non-residential facility.
So, any question or comments on Resolution 23? If not, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 23 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 24, 2015.
Resolution 24, 2015, was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the zoning code amendment request submitted by the City of Harrisburg to add conditions to Section 7-309.2Q and 7-309.2R of the zoning code related to specific criteria for convenience stores and convenience stores with gas dispensing to require the placement of trash and recycling receptacles in front of convenience stores without, with and without gas dispensing for use by patrons.
Ms. Daniels, did you want to make an amendment to that?
No.
Okay. Mr. Grover, what, what resolution were you requesting?
It's one that's not on there, so.
It's Resolution 21.
But you didn't put it on the agenda.
No, but it, but it's just a motion to allow that to go back to the Dauphin County.
I can do that after.
Okay, that'll be fine, all right. Any questions or comments on Resolution 24? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 24 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 27 of 2015.
Resolution 27 of 2015 as amended was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the sale, donation, and surrender of certain unused personal property of the city.
And that's to catalog a list?
That is a list of the CRW store properties.
Okay. So, any questions or comments on the amendment? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 27, as amended, passes.
Thank you. Resolution 31?
Resolution 31 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the lease agreement and memorandum of lease agreement, the forms of which are attached here too as exhibit A, together with the lease between Harrisburg Park and Authority as lesser, the Park and Authority, and Selco partnerships doing business as Verizon Wireless as lessy Verizon for installation, operation, and maintenance of communications antennas and related equipment on the City Island parking garage and authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of the lease by the City of Harrisburg as owner of the land upon which the City Island parking garage is constructed, the city.
So any questions or comments on resolution 31?
Yes, I have one comment on resolution 31. I find that the parking garage in City Island is an ISO. Adding an antenna, I believe, is going to be a further ISO. However, I understand the revenue is generating, it's a revenue generating, but I just want to go on record and say that I think that it's going to be an ISO, more of an ISO than the ridiculous parking garage in City Island is an ISO. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 31 passes.
Moving on to resolution 32 of 2015.
Resolution 32 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Mrs. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying a professional services agreement with Everbridge Incorporated for a software system for disseminating emergency and non-emergency electronic notifications to city residents.
Any questions or comments on resolution 32? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 32 passes.
Moving on to resolution 36.
Resolution 36 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Reed, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a Pennsylvania State Clean Diesel Grant Program project application to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to facilitate a project that will decrease emission from diesel-powered waste disposal trucks in the City of Harrisburg Public Works Department, Public Works Diesel Fleet, and create a demand for compressed national, natural gas CNG to fuel clean engine technologies.
Any questions or comments on resolution 36? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 36 passes.
Moving on to resolution 37.
Resolution 37 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to Highmark Blue Shield for $100,000 to use towards the Parks and Recreation Enrichment Summer and After School Program.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question or a comment. This resolution, basically, the grant says there's $100,000 for after-school to help children continue learning through the summer months, after-school hours is attached hereby. Ms. Wilson, Ms. Brown Wilson gave a report saying that $8,000 of that's going to be used for health and welfare programs, but that's not in the grant application as presented with exhibit A and exhibit B. And under the terms of the grant application, if it's not adhered to for what it was actually applied for, which is awarded, they're saying that they're awarding us $100,000 in exhibit B for the Summer and Enrichment After School Program, there's no mention of any other uses for those funds. So was there another, was there a modification saying that we're going to be able to use that $8,000 for anything else besides that?
Yes, Highmark approved it. It's already been approved.
Can I?
It's not in that for the summer.
For one clarification, that's not an application?
This is the, this is the award.
Right, there was no formal sort of application process. There was a letter, it's basically letters. They sent over their standard form and terms and condition document, which is what was presented to you as counsel. We didn't think you had the one from previously when it was three years ago, I guess four years ago. But they are going to be, as I understand it, participating, observing, and having input into what the money is used for. And it was my understanding, it was, as Ms. Wilson described it, and as from the hearing with Ms. Parker was speaking at, so...
Some of the healthy activities would be summer, would be summer activities, so that's, that's what they were like.
Well, I'm just saying, in their award notice, it doesn't say, mention any healthy activities or any other programs. And I want to make sure that if we're getting this money and we're giving the ideal, let's get to the bottom brass tacks. Is this going to include Zumba or not?
Not a hun, it's, it will go towards other things. It's just not Zumba. It's what I read. It will be Zumba, it will be aquatics, it will be exercise programs. There are five different programs under healthy lifestyles that Highmark says we can earmark if we want to. If we get to the point that we believe that we are not and cannot support the program and that the children's program becomes a priority and costs and it uses and absorbs $100,000, then those programs will not take place.
Well, that's not what we were, see, that's not what, where we were under oppression. Now, we were in oppression at Highmark. We were waiting for the grant. And that's on record, that we were waiting for the grant from Highmark to be able to approve this program, Zumba program, to pay for that. But are you telling me now that you're not going to pay that? Or you're not going to pay for Zumba out of this program?
It's not just, no.
Who's making, yeah, who does make the decision how we disseminate that money? Okay, have you given us a copy of how you're going to do that? Because what are you paying, what's the other entities that you're paying? What's the other entities that you're going to be paying for? I mean, break it down to tell us, out of the 8,400.
Yoga, it would be yoga, jazzercise, and health fairs, you can do health fairs. They just said whatever health, whatever wellness activities that you would like to do.
And that, and Zumba is a wellness program, and you told the ladies in this forum setting that you would pay, were waiting for the Highmark grant to be able to pay for that particular program. But now we're seeing that there's other programs that surpass that, or if we don't have enough money, then they won't be able to pay for that grant. But do some clarification here then.
It's a healthy initiative.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I have a motion to suspend the rules, please. Second? Thank you, okay, explain it.
The 8,500, she's speaking of is a healthy initiative, which would encompass programs such as Zumba, Aqua Zumba, yoga, and jazzercise as examples. So those are the programs that have been accepted through the Highmark. Those were presented to Highmark as part of the overall proposal.
Okay. What I've heard, Ms. Wilson, say that if there's not enough money available...
No, no, I think what she was saying is suppose if, suppose if jazzercise has two people, then we can use the money for something else. Then we can use it for health fairs.
But are you guaranteed?
We can use it for, you know, other, of healthy activities.
There's an, there is an outlined budget, which was accepted by Highmark.
Is that a copy of it?
Yeah, $8,400 is what they accepted, could be used for healthy lifestyles.
I just wanted to make sure that Zumba is going to be a part of that, that $8,400. I don't want to hear that now that we're not going to do that.
Well, if that's the case, we might as well open up to any, anybody else that would come in here in terms of wanting to have programming.
Well, this program was already under the City of Harrisburg. Now, my understanding is because of different personality clashes here that we can no longer do this program, so if that's the problem, then we need to really, you know...
That's never been the case.
Take care of that. That's never been the case. That's been the assumption of some people.
It's not the assumption, it is the case.
It is the assumption of some people.
But what we, what we need to do is be fair to everybody, okay?
Well, you know what, if we're going to be fair, then let's have people use their actual benefits and pay for their own health care and understand that there are policies out there that if you have health care, you can go to your health care policies and actually get a membership to a gym.
Well, that's good.
And that's, and that's what we should do. We should not be using government money to actually pay for programming in the summer for adults if we want to talk about it and get down to brass tactics.
Well, if you want to talk about it.
Because at the end of the day, I understand this program was structured, but guess what? Then what about everybody else that will come in here and say, well, will you fund a program for me that costs $2,000 or $3,000 and bring that into the city's fold for the summertime activities?
Well, I don't think I'm going to sit here and debate with you because I have a whole folder here.
I understand what you have there.
A lot of money that the City of Harrisburg has disseminated in the last year. I understand that. I have copies of checks where there's no justification of money being spent. Now, I don't want to bring it out tonight, but I will bring it out at another time. If we're going to talk about what money is going to be disseminated for different programs, these are adults, as well as children. This is the City of Harrisburg.
The majority of the money's going to the kids.
Excuse me, you had your opportunity. They all pay taxes. Everybody pay taxes. Under some of the programs that some of the residents here have...
Not our job to support that kind of stuff.
They don't have, that supports them to go to a healthy wellness program.
They do. They have benefits, Wanda.
Okay. A lot of them don't. A lot of them don't.
They do. They have health care benefits, and if you apply for it and go through your insurance company, you can get a...
There's a lot of them that do not have benefits.
Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Absolutely not. Well, they could all pay a dollar for every activity that they go to, and it would pay for themselves. It would be more than what we're allocating.
Ms. Parker, you've put it on record that you said that you would pay for the Zumba, and now you're telling me that if we don't have that...
No, she's not. No, she's not. It's in there.
You're going to pay the $4,000?
It's not. No, she didn't tell you, she didn't tell you that.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson, I'm talking to Ms. Parker.
I don't care if it's talking to her, I'm talking to you.
Like I said, if you're going to be disruptive, you can leave.
I'm not leaving.
Okay.
I'm not leaving.
Tell me, I can't have you leave.
No, you cannot.
Yes, I can.
Because you'll get sued. I own you and this place here. Now, we'll see that, to fruition, for real.
We'll do that.
We'll go there.
Now, Ms. Parker, what are we telling me? That you have, it's spring instructors, you have summer instructors?
You guys can't control activities and tell the government what they have to pay for.
And what is your Aqua Zumba? What's that?
I'm not going to sit here and let you think you can legislate stuff like that.
It can be in the pool, but it will be in the summertime. In other words, we still have the ability to, you know, make it flexible. It can be, it's supposed to be in the summer, but we don't know the dates yet. We don't have a date for it, and we want to see how many people can sign up for it. We did have papers on that last summer.
Okay.
Jazzercise, but again, the Highmark folks said, you know, can you make it a variety of opportunities for people? So, you know, we'll see. Yoga works out, it's fine. If jazzercise works out, that's fine. If there's, you know, some sort of a health fair that we should be producing, that's fine also. As a part of the activities that we do.
Okay. Again, my question is, the $2,000 is going to be paid for the instructor over the spring and summer. Is that $4,000 to that one instructor? Is that $2,000 to one?
We will have to decide that. We'll have to see what an hourly rate would be and what the, what the times are, what the, you know, with the...
What agreement did you make with the young lady that came before you?
They didn't make any agreement.
You did. I'm talking to Ms. Parker, excuse me, Ms. Wilson.
They didn't make any agreement.
I'm not speaking to you.
You don't have to. I'm speaking to you.
Please be quiet.
Hand my paper back, please.
We have to enter into a contract with whatever instructor is going to be taking it.
So now you're telling us that you're not going to, you're not going to have her as instructor? I understand that.
No, no, whatever instruct, I'm just saying, whatever instructor we have for Zumba will be paid by a contract basis.
Now, this mayor called her up to meet with her, to talk to her about having this program. And now you're telling us that you're not going to have that program, and she's not going to be...
No, no, it's her or anybody, I'm not naming people. Any instructor will enter into a contract.
Well, I'm talking about her specifically because she came here to this council.
There will be a contract with...
After the mayor called her to resume the program.
Correct, so there will be a contract with any person, or whatever instructor you...
Oh, okay, for that service.
I have something on this.
Go ahead.
I specifically asked about this because, you know, you could say all you want. It's not our job to fund certain programs. And I've sat here on this council for now three years, four months, and I don't know how many days. And we have funded all kinds of crap. Half million dollars almost for a pool that may or may not be open Memorial Day. Was not open last year, may not be open until Memorial Day. And if you think about it, in the area where this pool is located, if we put a half million dollars in revitalization to that area, how much more of a benefit if we'd have just paved it over because it's past, it's expired? Pools have an expiration. They're only supposed, they're like bridges. They're only supposed to be there for so long. This pool is well beyond its expiration. The engineer knows it, and this administration knows it. But yet, in the last two years, almost a half million dollars have been put into a pool that's only going to be operational maybe three months at the maximum this year. If we had half million dollars to spend, we could have revitalized that whole area, put some fountains in so that the kids can run through the water like they're doing a lot of neighborhoods, and save the city money, and revitalized that whole area and put a beautiful park down there. Half million dollars could have went to the 14th Street residents in the same neighborhood. Then you turned around and gave a quarter of a million dollars to pay for people to come downtown and have a good time. We don't have money to pay for programs. We just approved, this account I voted no, to a quarter of a million dollars to pay for parking, so to subsidize the cost of the parking so people can go out to eat. This 95-year-old lady sitting here in this office right now has a lateral line that needs to be repaired, but we gave quarter million dollars so people can park. Then we turned around and gave $50,000 in the exact same meeting to the employees so that they can now, we can now pay their closing costs if they would like to move back into the city. Now, these employees get paid a wage that is equivalent to their salary for their education and their experience. They're making an equitable salary, and we're going to subsidize them. Now, we're going to give them $2,000 if they would like to apply because they don't qualify for low-income programs. So the city is going to give them money, but then you're going to sit there and say that we don't have $6,000 to pay for a Zumba program, that we had almost 50 people in this chamber a month ago to talk about it. So when you sit here and keep saying we don't have money and it's not our job... Yes, it is. I'm sorry. No, it's not our job to subsidize, because no, you're absolutely right. It's not our job to subsidize residents. It's not our job to subsidize non-residents. But this is a program that I believe in, and I believe that if we had $6,000, we'd pay $10,000 for a Christmas tree. $10,000 for a Christmas tree. And you're talking about a $6,000 program that we had over 50 people in this chamber talking about. And no, it may not be important to you, and it may be a personality conflict about the people that's in it. I don't care. I don't get to choose the residents. I don't get to pick and choose who does what. If this program is actually working, is keeping people off the street, and is making people happy and making people having a better life, quality of life, I was upset all weekend because I couldn't ride my bike because of personal issues. And if these people go to this class and they feel better about being in that class, so be it. It's a lousy $6,000. I've calculated almost a million dollars' worth of nonsense that this administration's put out in the last month. That's all I have to say, Madam President.
You sure? Okay, good. I agree. I just, I think it's, you know, when we have 50 people come here and she tells us that the mayor had called her, reached out to her. She didn't reach out to him. He reached out to her to continue a program for the city residents. And for those who are non-city residents, it's only a few, but...
So it's in there. That's what we're saying. It is in there.
I just want to make sure that it's in there. I don't want you to tell me that she's only going to be paid $2,000.
That's exactly what this says.
No, it says for a session.
It's possible.
It depends, you know, it depends on the hourly rate. We have to calculate. We have to calculate.
I still have concerns about that. I'm a no vote then. Because I see that she's not going to be paid and I think that you're going to do, reallocate this money somewhere else. And I think it's fair. Especially when you stood here and told her that you would make sure that the program continued, that you would have the money as soon as the Highmark grant became available. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Let's go back in session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to go back in session. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Motion is moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Moving on. Any other questions or comments on Resolution 37? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Resolution 37 passes.
Resolution 38, 2015.
Resolution 38 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying custom pricing agreement with government energy for the generation of electricity for certain properties and accounts.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 38? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 38 passes.
Moving on to Resolution 39.
Resolution 39 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the second proposed 2015 budget relocations as amended.
Mr.?
Yes.
Amendments, please.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to remove Appendix B, which is dealing with the proposal for a deputy business administrator position from the resolution. It'll be as standalone as its own resolution and move that back into committee. And then we'll vote on the remaining, the remainder of the resolution as is.
So, are you going to table it? We'll call for a table.
Just on that, I mean, we'll take that out. I don't think that's...
You want to table?
No, we don't necessarily have to table. We just have to take it out, right?
Well, see, you're taking it out. I mean, you're not...
We have to actually have a resolution, a motion that does two things. At the committee hearing, there was an amendment introduced with more schedules or... And so, that has to be moved in. And the one you wish has to be moved out.
Okay.
So, we need two motions. Excuse me.
Yes, we're just, it could be one or two motions. We're just trying to pull the exact language out for you. My memory is failing me on what the letters are that were introduced. The last schedule was introduced at the committee meeting. There's an extra page to it introduced at the committee that was reviewed only at committee but wasn't introduced.
It was discussed in public, so it should be...
What letters were they?
Appendix C.
A and C are staying in, B we're taking out.
So, A, B, C.
And C is what was added last time?
The deputy business administrator, which is being removed.
Okay. So, it could be one motion to remove Appendix B. And I'm assuming that would become a separate resolution, correct? Of which we'll move that back in the committee.
This is C.
But then you're going to amend. You're amending...
We don't have to, because it was discussed at the meeting.
But I thought he said he had some changes.
So, there is, so at the committee, public, at the hearing for it, when it was introduced at the legislative session, it didn't have Exhibit C.
Right, and we had that for the committee meeting. So, it was a true stand...
So, that was never introduced to... It was introduced at a committee meeting, not at this session.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, that's okay.
Yeah, and then you want to remove a piece of...
Appendix B.
All of Appendix B. I think you could just, I think you could then just do a motion to pass it without Appendix B. Move Appendix B and then vote on it.
Okay, we'll move Appendix B out. We'll make that a first resolution. And the motion is to pass Resolution 39 without Appendix B. There we go.
That's fine. We have a motion on Resolution 39 to pass Resolution 39 with the acceptance, I mean, with the, without Appendix B, which will be at a later date discussed and moved back into committee.
Correct.
Any questions or comment on that motion to amend?
I just need a second.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please call the votes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution 39 as amended passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 41.
Resolution 41 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution authorizing the entry into an event production agreement for the production and development of the Independence Day and Compona festivals for 2015 and 2016.
Any questions or comments on Reso... I'm sorry. Go to Parks and Recreation Committee. I'm sorry, it's a new resolution. That would be placed in Parks and Recreation Committee. Resolution 42, 2015.
Resolution 42 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Reed. It's a resolution approving a Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board Local Law Enforcement Grant Agreement between the Pennsylvania Gaming Control Board Grantor and the City of Harrisburg Grantee and the Humane Society of Harrisburg Co-Grantee for $160,572.48 of grant funds in the year one and $136,842.18 in year two in order to prevent, investigate, and prosecute unlawful gambling.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance. Moving on to Resolution 43.
Resolution 43 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Kuplinsky. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a federal equitable sharing agreement and certification to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the federal equitable sharing program.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution 44.
Resolution 44 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Kuplinsky. It's a resolution approving a professional services contract with Anytime Systems Incorporated and the City of Harrisburg to implement software support and maintenance services used to track the time and attendance of employees.
Are you kidding? Can I ask a question on this?
Madam President, you have the microphone. You can ask anything you wish.
How many employees? How many employees is...
This one is replacing one that's in the building already that I think the current version is in the new city council chambers. It's being moved out of there.
But how many employees are affected by this?
On the clock, I don't know. It's operations, its tax office uses it. Code did use it. I'm not sure they're still using it.
So, these are only employees in the whole building that uses the time clock?
Well, there's other employees in the city that use the time clock.
Well, I know public works.
Right.
But I'm talking about here. Martin Luther King's...
I don't have an answer to that, Madam President. For the committee, we could find out. I don't have an answer to that.
So, we're going to have this clock in?
Okay. That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to old business.
Oh, wait. I'd like to make my motion. So, I would like to move to amend Resolution 21-25, 2015, just the section beginning parentheses 2 and have it read to change the existing text to require notification of property owners within 100 feet radius of the boundary of the subject property. That's the motion.
Second?
Second, please.
Second?
Okay.
And that's all, right?
That's all you want to do, just amend it?
Yes.
And then when it comes up?
Yeah, and then when it comes up.
I think he would add, and to send, and then send it back to Dauphin County Planning for review.
Okay, and then to send it back to Dauphin County Planning.
So, did you get that, Kirk? Did you get that?
Yeah, we're just going to vote on the motion. I can just...
Yeah, just the motion.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks. Thank you. Moving on to old business. Any other old business?
I have old business.
Okay, Mr. Kuplinsky?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd intended and worked to try and bring up a vote for Bill 18 of 2014 this evening. And that, of course, is the LERTA or Tax Abatement Bill. We brought up the bill. I brought up the bill at the mayor's request in December. And we were ready to pass that bill after making some amendments to it. But the administration asked that we hold off and for them to take a look to see what the effects were on that. At that point, of course, we were ready to pass that bill and I believe the votes were there to have it. Since then, there's been discussions back and forth regarding language, regarding developers and who may be working on those buildings, i.e. the construction companies, and making sure that not only does this use to build the economy on the tax level and for development, but also to make sure that the jobs of the folks building those buildings are going to be, the folks are going to be paid a fair wage and that responsible contractors are used to work on those projects. It's important to myself and other members of council, we've had this discussion before, that we have quality projects, but also to pay a good wage to the workers. It helps shrink in our economy, the community, and raise wages in the city, of course, and make sure that the work is done on time, on budget, and that good work is done. This is what responsible contractor language does. We understand that other municipalities have implemented such languages. We want to do that here as well. Was working with Solicitor's Office and other folks to have this important language put into the ordinance directly to make sure that it can be enforced. The difference between an ordinance and resolution and many times is that it doesn't have as much teeth and the enforcement isn't always there. We're getting there. I intended to bring it up this evening from the floor and again, worked with the Solicitor's Office. I believe the votes were there to get it passed. But we're still at a bit of an impasse, not insurmountable one, but an impasse nonetheless. My colleagues also wanted to get this done, but we've got to make sure it's done correctly accordingly. We're going to have a meeting on May 11, I believe, which is the day before our next legislative session to go back and it will not be on Resolution 140. It will be going back to Bill 18 to put necessary language in to make sure that responsible contractor language is in the bill and with the goal of getting it passed on May 12. This is an important bill that does very good things. The administration has done a lot of good work to get a good bill. But we want to make sure that it has the intended consequence and that really everybody wants it. So, thank you. That's all I have for old business.
Mr. Kuplinsky?
Yes.
I would just ask that you had indicated that another city, who is a third-class city, had this same kind of resolution. So, would you obtain a copy of that particular language that we can give to the Solicitor's Office?
And we will track down their solicitors as well, find out if they've had a way to tweak it to get through the legal process.
Okay. Any other old business?
Yeah, I have something I want to say because I listened here tonight and I listened to my colleagues. And I'm going to bring this up under new business. You're still into old? You're going to go to new?
Is it new business or old business?
It's new business. It's new business then.
All right. Any other old business?
Sorry.
All right, now new business.
Now, new business.
All right. Go ahead.
Sitting here listening to my colleagues tonight rant about what this administration has spent. So, I want to touch on a few things. And I wasn't going to go there, but I'm going there. In order to grow a city, you have to have a leader that has a vision to be able to create things outside the box. There's a lot of things that take place in this community that the people do not realize that take place even inside City Hall. If you do not have inventive ideas, you cannot possibly change a community. You cannot bring in investors. There's not one of us sitting on this dice that are millionaires. And I want people to look at this very closely so that when people start voting on activities, ladies and gentlemen... And see, that $6,000 or $4,000 is not the issue because it's in the information and you voted no and you should have voted yes. Okay? No, you're not. But let me finish talking, Sandra. You had your speech and you gave your spill tonight. And I'm going to, I'm going to give you, you're exactly right. Because you've got to listen. Just listen. We have an obligation to this community to look at what's important, how we grow it, how we change it, how we bring investors. And you can't bring investors in when we keep putting up roadblocks and believing that the only thing we have to do is legislate and block everything. It serves no purpose if that's what we do. Absolutely no purpose. And it's always a combative situation instead of a constructive situation where we're talking about how do we lift our community up and how does the boat rise so that everybody else sitting in this fishbowl rises so that everyone is profiting? And it's not taking place because we're looking at things through the wrong lens. That's my observation only. But we need to take off this mask that we put on and this perspective that we say that we're here for our community, but we're very combative with each other. And so, I apologize to you, President, because guess what? The behavior I exhibited here tonight is not what we should be doing.
No, it's not.
Because it's supposed to be about having a collective group of people moving this community forward. And we can't do that when you stymie the growth of the people who actually have the responsibility. Our job is to be legislators. It is not to be the administrative body. We cannot dictate to them what's good, bad, or indifferent aside from the fact that we're holding the checks and balances in place to make sure they are not overspending and not exercising and not putting us back in the same rabbit hole we just got dug out of. That is our job as legislators. Nothing more and nothing less. We have a fiduciary responsibility to this community to check them when they're right and to check them when they're wrong. But we cannot tell them how to spend it across the board when it comes to actually money coming from grants and things of that nature. And so, we all need to get on board. Because the last time I checked, everybody appears a Democrat, but we all seem to be acting like something other than that. And we need to at least give this man an opportunity. And yes, I support it. Because he came with ideas. He's a businessman. Businesspeople think of business ideas. Government has run amok across the United States because you don't have business leaders in place. You have people who are willing to dig in your pockets and take and take and take and never give. So, we better start thinking about how we actually make this work. Because it's about everybody in this community benefiting but making sure that you just can't single people out every time you don't like a decision that gets made. Thank you, and I'm finished.
Okay. Any other new business?
Me too.
It's quick. I was driving down Front Street. Many people drive down Front Street. And there's 31 lights from Forester Street to all the way down to the river that are out. Is that what you were going to say?
No.
Oh, okay. So, we can get public works to give us a report to see what's being done. If there's, if there's something with the electrical grid that has caused those to be out, then that's one thing. But there's 31 lights out for blocks and blocks and blocks on our main thoroughfare through the city and downtown. And if we're trying to encourage tourists to come and all this stuff, we need to do a better job on that, on that street at least. And lots of other streets, of course. But we've done... Oh, there he is.
Hey. Yeah, I'm sitting over there.
Hi, Mr. Johnson.
Real quick, like, you know, we've been saying this many times. What's going on is underground wiring. Now, you know, Front Street is a state road. They're planning on doing some work. So, there's no sense of us digging up twice. That's what's going on. I'll get with Kevin again and see if there's anything we can do. But that's really the problem.
The wiring is going to be repaired as a part of the repayment cost.
And we're looking at that when?
Yeah, when PennDOT gets these sides, you know, paved, paved the state road. Right there between, I guess, Geiger, right there, Geiger and Seneca. That's the same situation right there on Front Street, Oscar.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. You're welcome.
Mr. Allen, do you have something?
Yep, I'll be quick, too. Two things I just want to talk about. Tonight was a rally for marriage equality on the steps of the federal courthouse while we were meeting here. Today, the Supreme Court heard arguments about marriage equality Today, the Supreme Court heard arguments about marriage equality that could lead to a nationwide decision on the constitutional right of marriage equality. I just wanted to express my support and solidarity with my friends and colleagues who were at that rally. Number two, this Saturday is the Great Harrisburg Literacy Cleanup. It'll be taking place across the city. I encourage residents and members of the community to get involved. I'm excited to partner with Two Minute Tuesday. We'll be meeting at Hamilton School at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday and we'll be covering kind of the Sixth and Seventh Street Quarters and in that area. So, just encourage anyone who wants to join us. You are welcome to do so.
Okay, thank you. Hamilton School?
Yes, Hamilton School, 10:00 a.m. Saturday.
Ms. Reed?
Actually, I have two things. I'm going to, the Capital Region Water has sent out letters. If you haven't gotten your letter, please check your mail. I checked with Shannon after our caucus today. They're changing, we're changing the billing. The City of Harrisburg is going to be billing you for your trash bill and your water and sewer bills coming from Capital Region Water. The biggest change in this is if you have automatic payments. If your automatic payments are now, because it's all one bill, you're going to have to set up an automatic payment form and they actually submitted an automatic payment form. And it actually, she says it starts this month, which is, the beginning of the month is May. So, if you have to get time to change your automatic payment for your water and sewer bill, you need to fill out this form and get it back to them. And I believe it's going to take two billing cycles for this to go through. And there's other payment options that are no charge. So, you can use your debit card, you can use online services, there's other ways to pay it. But if you have a bill that's being automatically paid, your trash bill is going to continue to be automatically paid, but your water bill, you have to fill out this form, submit it back to Capital Region Water so that they can pay, so they can get you set up an automatic payment under their system because they don't have access to, after the split, they will not have access to your banking and financial records. So, you have to resubmit it directly to them. And if you have any questions, you can contact Capital Region Water directly regarding that. They did have a press conference, from what I understand, the mayor had a press conference regarding this, I believe, last week, but a lot of people still weren't aware of it because I wasn't aware of it until I got the letter for our business regarding that. And my final thought is, I was told that a high-ranking official from this administration doesn't care about my vote because I am a lone vote. I am the majority vote and my vote doesn't matter. I don't mind being the majority vote or the lone vote. If history has taught us anything, we must not forget those, must not forget to learn from history. Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it. In 2003, we had one lone councilwoman that put up a caution sign about the incinerator retrofit and the bad ideals and the deals associated with it. 10 years later, we sold the incinerator, our parking, our water, and our souls and control of our destiny. Makes you wonder, if we had listened to that one lone drummer, what the outcome of our city would be today. We can't go back to 2003, but what we can do is be aware of, wave the caution flag about the decisions being made in the kitchen cabinet of this administration. This administration would like for us to pass budgets and resolutions without us completely reading them. This administration has taken to giving us piecemeal, which is like giving us a book one chapter at a time without, not in the proper order, and not giving us a proper time to read it. Yes, all the words are there, but if we're not allowed to read the entire book before we vote on the chapter, how can we make a competent, complete decision, a decision that's not rushed and made in a complete, informed way? So, although I may often be the lone vote, I'm going to continue to vote my conscience because my job is to be the fiscal watchdog for this community. And if I'm going to continue to beat that drummer, maybe 10 years from now, you'll look back and say, she was right. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. It was a statement made that this leader has a vision. Well, a former mayor's had a vision too. Would you call this same individual a leader? I respectfully did for a year and a half. But when this leader bashes an individual without due cause, this same leader calls councilmembers the night before a reorganization and tells them, don't vote for a particular person because I don't want her as the president. I question his leadership and I question his vision. For a year and a half, I've tried to work with this administration to do what is necessary to make sure that the City of Harrisburg moves forward. For 18 to 24 months, we were involved in several meetings every day to make sure that we get out of this debt that we had, $600 million.